My pleasure to introduce Dan Reedy.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for inviting me this afternoon to speak to you about why the cost of water is rising. Maybe that should have been why is the cost of water rising? There are these two young fish swimming along and they happen to meet with an older fish swimming the other way who nods at them and says, "Morning, boys." That's why, okay, "Morning, boys. How's the water?" And the two young fish swim a bit and then eventually one of them looks over at the other and goes, "What the hell is water?" The point of the fish story is that the most obvious, ubiquitous, important realities are often the ones that are the hardest to see and talk about. When we turn on the tap or twist open a tall, cold plastic bottle, we may not give a second shot to where our drinking water comes from, but how it gets from the ground to the glass is far more complex than we think. That's a quote from James Sussman from the book Drinking Water. Where does the water come from? Well, we have what's known as the hydrologic cycle. The hydrologic cycle. We have the clouds, precipitation in form of snow and rain, surface runoff, goes into the groundwater table, goes down, evaporates back into the clouds, rains, snow, goes back into the groundwater table, goes into the ocean, goes into the streams, evaporates back into the clouds, and it just keeps going. The hydrologic cycle, for eons, for millennia, for millions and millions and millions of years, it is the same water. You do not make new water. You can't take some of this and some of that and make water. Whatever water we have today is the same water we had billions of years ago, the same exact water. It's either ice, it's snow, it's in groundwater, it's in the ocean, it's in the lake, it's in the stream, it's the same water. It might be in different places at different times, but it's the same water. The hydrologic cycle. Where does our water come from? Here in the San Diego Valley. Here in Teppe City, you have five water purveyors. The city of Belmonte has nine water purveyors. We are fortunate here in the San Diego Valley to have local groundwater sources known as the main San Diego basin. And the extent of the main San Diego basin is the San Diego mountains on the north, Alhambra, Monterey Park on the west, Montebello North Whittier on the south, and Glanoros and Nidus and Kellogg Hill to the east. That is the San Diego basin. The water shed from the San Diego mountains when it rains and snows, runs off, goes down through the ocean, but the water tends to go back into the groundwater table as precipitation. Back before the urbanization that we have today and the hardscape meaning blacktop and cement, we had a lot of open fields, dirt roads. We didn't have the cement and the blacktop that we have today. So the water was able to percolate back into the groundwater table. Now we have cement, concrete, blacktop. The water tends to runoff into the culvert, into the storm drain, into the wash, and out to the ocean. But, that's not true. Flood control captures that water before it gets to the ocean, holds it in the San Diego River or the Rio Grande here in the San Diego Valley, and forces that water to percolate back into the groundwater table by way of rubber dams or the waters held up in the San Diego Canyon in the three reservoirs that we have up there, Codgerell, San Diego, and Morris Dam. Here's a colorway view of the main San Diego basin, cross-section. So you have the San Diego Mountains to the north, you have the Pointe Hills to the south, and you have this large, concave basin. And you have what's called the key well in Bobone Park. The key well is what measures how healthy the basin is. The higher the elevation in the water table or in the basin, the more water we have to pump out and pervade. When it does rain or snow, this water table tends to go down. If you go along the 605 freeway north towards the 210 freeway and look out on the side, you'll see the ponds out there, the quarries, and you'll see the water sitting in those quarries. That is the elevation of the water table. When it's low, our water table is low. When it's high, our water table is high. Right now, it's somewhat low. Just for reference, the main San Diego basin can hold eight million acre-feet of water. An acre-foot equals 325,850 gallons, enough water to supply two hundred homes for one year. Eight million acre-feet equals 2.6 trillion gallons. So here in the main San Diego basin, we have a capacity to hold 2.6 trillion gallons of water. Local groundwater. The main San Diego basin is an adjudicated groundwater basin and is managed by nine hundred water masters. Each party to the judgment has a conscripted pumping right to extract a certain amount of water from their wells in fiscal year. Fiscal year runs July 1st to June 30th. So we start the pot on July 1st, go all the way through the calendar, come back to June 30th. That's a fiscal year. Under the judgment, when a party overproduces its right, a party overproduces its right, they must pay to replenish the overproduction. This replenishment is fulfilled by buying imported water. An example, XYZ Water Company has the right to produce 20,000 acre-feet in a given fiscal year, but they actually produce 30,000 acre-feet to meet its customers' needs. XYZ must then pay the water master to replace the 10,000 acre-feet of overproduction. They have a right to produce 20, they produce 30, they overproduce 10, they have to pay to replace that overproduction. And that replacement water is imported water which equals money, dollars. That's one reason the water costs are going up. Imported water. We said groundwater, local groundwater, now we have imported water. Where does the water in Southern California get its water? Well, in Los Angeles, they get it from the LA Aqueduct. Mahalo went up to the Owens Valley and put in the Los Angeles Aqueduct and brought it to the city of Los Angeles. The Metropolitan Water District went to the Colorado River and put in the Colorado River Aqueduct, 700,000 acre-feet of water to the Colorado Aqueduct. Edmond G. Brown Senior, the senior governor, initiated what's known as the State Water Project or the Edmond G. Brown California Aqueduct that brings water down from Northern California, from Lake Orville, through the Delta, down to Los Angeles. When it gets behind the San Diego mountains, a great line, it splits and goes across the back of the San Gables to what's called Lake Silverwood. And the west port goes to Pyramid Lake and then Castaic Lake. That's where the water is from. The state project, Colorado River, Los Angeles gets it from the LA Aqueduct, there's local transfers and storage, and then we have local supplies for groundwater and recycling here in the San Diego Valley. There's environmental issues on importing water. The Colorado River Aqueduct, less rain and less snow equals less water going down the river for many states that draw water from the Colorado River. There's a fact that there are seven states drawing off the Colorado. The state of Colorado, 3.86 million acre-feet. The state of Utah, 1.71 million acre-feet. The state of Wyoming, 1.04 million acre-feet. New Mexico gets 0.84 million acre-feet. Arizona, 2.85. California, the thirsty ones, 4.4 million acre-feet off the Colorado. Nevada, .3. Even Mexico gets water off the Colorado at 1.5 million acre-feet. For a total of 16.5 million acre-feet, 32 million homes, average-sized homes for that amount of water. This is the picture of the Colorado River Aqueduct coming in from the Colorado River, goes to Lake Matthews, and then goes to the Metropolitan Treatment Center. The Edmond G. Brown California Aqueduct, this is the Edmond G. Senior, Pat's dad, Jerry's father, Pat. It's named after him. The Edmond G. California Aqueduct, the State Water Project is also referred to as the State Water Project. We have what's called the Delta Smelt. Look how big that fish is compared to that person's hand. It's a finger length, it's as long as a finger. That little fish is the mightiest, strongest fish in the world. Why is that? That little fish, the smelt, the Delta Smelt, can stop the Harvey Banks Pumping Plant, the pumps, from pumping. Those little fish, the smelt, the judge, Judge Wanger, in the Ninth Circuit Court of California, said that the smelt have precedence over the people as opposed to water coming down the California Aqueduct. The State Water Project at the Banks Pumping Plant, where the water comes down from Orville, comes down to these pumps, picks up that water, pumps it over the mountains and down into Southern California. This little fish stopped those pumps from pumping. Imported water to the San Diego Valley is from the San Francisco Bay Delta and the Colorado River, among other distant places, distant places. Reliance among other distant places, reliance on such imported water makes the water supply available to residents of the San Diego Valley less reliable and more expensive than local groundwater sources. Local groundwater here in the San Diego Valley is a lot cheaper than imported water from Northern California. We're talking $1,000 an acre-foot. Right now, it's about $970 an acre-foot, close to $1,000 today. January 1st, it'll be over $1,000. It'll go up about 5% a year going forward for imported water. Lake Orville, which is the headwater of the California State Project up in Northern California, Lake Orville is a keystone facility of the State Water Project and is its largest reservoir with a capacity of 3.5 million acre-feet. Again, an acre-foot is equal to 325,850 gallons. Lake Orville is up at the top, above Sacramento. It's a huge reservoir. This is what it looks like when it's full. I had the opportunity to visit Lake Orville in 2007. The water was going down the spillway. That's how much water was in it. I had an opportunity to go back up and visit again just last weekend, September 6th. This is what it looks like. Normally, the water would be up to here. Look at how low it is right now compared to over here. Low spillback, low rainfall, reservoirs are low. Bay Delta Conservation Plan. If you haven't heard about the Bay Delta Conservation Plan, you're gonna hear more about it going forward. How many remember the Peripheral Canal was on the ballot? The ballot initiative in 2008 was an initiative to tax ourselves to putting what was called the peripheral canal to move the water around the Sacramento Bay Delta. The peripheral canal, right now, instead is called the Bay Delta Conservation Plan. That's the new ability to correct terminology rather than calling it the peripheral canal. What it will do is move water around the Delta, right here, from Chastel Lake, Lake Orville, down to the Delta. The conveyance that they're talking about are two tunnels underneath the bay to the pumping plant to take the water down to Southern California. Construct new conveyance tunnels to protect California's water supply, improve the Delta ecosystem through habitat restoration, and remove pollutants, invasive species, and other stressors harming the Delta environment. The Bay Delta provides water for 25 million people, 3 million acre-feet of agriculture, 750 different, I don't know what it says, different sources of plants and animals in California. 1.7 billion-dollar economy. What it proposes to do is to take two tunnels to the Jura Danci. If one tunnel is out of service, the other tunnel will be in service. And they're looking at, sitting here someplace, 14 billion, with a B, 14 billion dollars to get this thing done. And Jerry Brown Jr. is in favor of it. And guess who's paying for it?
You are.
We are.
Everybody is.
Exactly. Those that take water, they're talking about maybe $5 to $6 a month when your water go. But it's gotta be done. If we don't do it today, we're gonna be out of water tomorrow.
Dan?
Yo.
This was voted in '08?
No, it was defeated.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The peripheral canal was defeated. It's a north-south situation. The Northerners are gonna vote no because we, the Southerners, are stealing that water. When I was up there last weekend and we drove along the Delta, everybody has a sign out in front of their house, "Save the Delta, say no to the tunnels." Everywhere you go, say no, save the Delta, say no to the tunnels. So they already have a mindset that they're not going to give Southern California water. We're not gonna take more water than we're currently taking. Not a drop more, actually we're gonna take less water, or we're gonna do it more efficiently with this conveyance system. And it will help the Delta, the ecosystem, the levees. You just can't tell the Northerners that we don't steal water. Here's a little example of urban growth and water conservation. Over here, we have millions of acre-feet. Over here, we have population in millions. And through the years, from 1950, you see that we used more water than we had population. Our population went up, but the use of water went down through conservation, recycled water, and other smart features. So we're using less water and the population's going up. How does the water get to your house? The water is free, but you're paying for the service to get it to your house. Under pressure, pure and wholesome, meeting all current and state federal drinking water standards, at your beck and call, day and night. The water's free. We don't charge you for the water. We're charging you for the service to get it to your house. Remember that. Under pressure, pure and wholesome, meeting all current and state federal drinking water standards, at your beck and call, day and night. You get up in the middle of the night at 2:00, you go to the tap, the water is there. We hold. Unless we have an emergency and we have to shut it off for some reason because we had to make repairs, and they'll see that. Infrastructure then. This is what, infrastructure. If you look closely, that's Dan Snail. At San Diego, at the San Diego Valley. He was in charge of getting the water down the San Diego River to your farm for your crops. That was infrastructure. That's all you needed. It was a ditch. Just go over to the San Diego and say, "We need to get water over to my farm." Okay. Get a shovel, start digging, and then you just divert it over to your farm. You just stand there and let it say that, and that's it. We're good. Infrastructure then. Infrastructure now. We have wells that we have to pump the water from the ground. We have storage reservoirs. We have to hold that water for five or four months, deep demand. We have pipes to convey that water. You don't see the pipes. You drive over them. We have treatment facilities. Because there's bad things in the water that other people put in there, we have to take that water out. So we have ion exchange, we have ultraviolet light, we have air stripping. Comes with a cost. This is infrastructure. This all has to be maintained. In the Los Angeles Times article by Bettina Boxall on June 4th of 2013, she states that EPA survey ranks California number one in water infrastructure needs. California could use $44.5 billion to fix its aging water systems over the next two decades. This is 2013. According to a federal survey that placed the state at the top of a national list of water infrastructure needs, Texas at nearly $34 billion and New York with over $22 billion were next in line. Texas, $34, New York, $22, California, $44 billion to fix its water infrastructure. The assessment conducted by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency in 2011 and released Tuesday is used to document the capital investment needs of public drinking water systems across the country. Water efficiency magazine, July, August, 2013. Deep detection is in a crisis. Once again, the nation's infrastructure report card is out, and once again, it shows no sign of improvement. The American Society of Civil Engineers gives America's drinking water infrastructure a D. Much of the basin's drinking water infrastructure is nearing the end of its useful life. The Association of, uh, the American Society of Civil Engineers reports adding there are an annual estimated 240,000 water main breaks, annual, 240,000 water mains break. The cost in years and decades replaced every pipe could touch $1 trillion according to the American Water Risk Association. Here's the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power Supercharger at the scene of a water main break in Hollywood in May. The 12-inch cast iron pipe was installed in 1931. That pipe is 80 years old. I'd like to get your water out of that tank right there. It looks kind of crusty. How about, water shooting up out of the air and guys in the hole trying to get it to shut down? Blow around the ground. I'd like to come home to that in the middle of the street. Infrastructure. The invisible infrastructure that gets water to your house. Same holds. Water running up the street. The invisible infrastructure that carries water to your house. How about regulatory compliance? Now that we have infrastructure, other way, we have regulatory compliance. The law plus legal ease equals money. Regulatory. The regulators, who are the regulators? The California Department of Public Health, the United States Environmental Protection Agency, the State Water Resources Control Board. These are all people that make regulation that says you shall, you will, and you must. No if ands or what's about it. How about some of the regulations? Chromium 6, hexavanium chromium. How many saw the movie Ben Rocklisch? How many heard about heat leak out by Barstow? What was the chemical of concern? Hexavanium chromium, chrome 6. That's the big one. Hexavanium chromium maximum contaminant level just set the other day by Department of Health Services at 10 parts per million, parts per billion, micrograms per liter. That's an interim maximum contaminant level. There's a 45-day comment period. They may set it even lower. If they set this even lower, let's say two micrograms per liter, what happens? We have to install treatment. Who pays for that treatment?
We do.
The person paying the water bill. But the law says you have to meet the MCL, the maximum contaminant level. You cannot exceed the maximum contaminant level. So therefore, we're forced to put in treatment. We have to remove the contaminant to the specified level. UCMR 3, Unregulated Contaminant Monitoring Rule 3. That's where we go out and monitor our sources, the wells, for everything, anything that the Environmental Protection Agency says, "Well, uh, go and check for that. Go and check for this. Go and check for that other. See if you have it." We have to pay for the monitoring. Guess who pays for that monitoring? You do. The regulators say, "Go out and look for it. Check for it. Sample that well. See if it's in there." You wanna know. You wanna know too, right? You wanna know what's in your water. We have what's called the lead and copper rule, short-term revisions. It's in-home monitoring for lead and copper. All water systems monitored for lead and copper. They pick random houses that have copper plumbing. Come to your house, leave you a bottle, and tell you to do a first draw, first thing in the morning before anybody flushes the toilet, takes a shower, and makes breakfast or coffee. Fill that bottle with water, we send it to a laboratory, no cost to you. The cost is hidden because it comes out on retail, but we come out and ask you to fill that bottle, we take it to a laboratory, we analyze it for lead and copper to make sure that the water's not aggressive and that you don't have a high elevation of lead and copper in your water. EPA mandates that, Environmental Protection Agency, we have to do it, we have to do it once a year for three years, and then reduce monitoring if you're under the maximum contaminant level. So right now, the systems are in, every three years. We have what's called the Long-Term 1-2 Enhance Surface Water Treatment Rule, the LT1/LT2ESWTR. We like acronyms in water businesses. Everything's acronym. So if you have surface water, you have to go out and check the water to make sure it doesn't have cryptosporidia, it doesn't have giardia, it doesn't have all those other things that could give you gonchitis of the blowhole or other things. Gonchitis of the blowhole. That's where you run to the bathroom, that constant. Other regulations, Stage 2 Disinfectant by Products, Disinfection by Products Rule. What that is, is when you take water that has a lot of organic carbon in it and you disinfect it because we're mandated to disinfect the water, and you hit it with chlorine to kill the bacteria, you get what's called a disinfection by product. Trihalomethanes, which is a carcinogen. So we have to regulate that. We have to see how much trihalomethanes in the water. So we have to do that. Now there's a stage 2. We did a stage 1, now we're in the stage 2 part of it. The groundwater rule, groundwater rule, says that your well has to be constructed in such a way that contaminants cannot get down into the water. Large water systems like San Diego Valley Water Company, Golden State, and the larger water systems, wells, are maintained to where the contamination does not get down the well. But if your water comes from some one well outfit mutual that serves 150 people, I'd be suspicious of that well. We have the revised Total Coliform Rule. That's where we go out once a week, test the water to make sure it doesn't have bacteria in the water. It's a Total Coliform Presence Action, which is an indicator. We have to go and test the water. When you turn on the tap and the water just gets there, it's, okay? Recycled water reuse groundwater completion rule. Since we're running out of fresh water to put back into groundwater, we're now going to ground recycled water. In Orange County, they're taking recycled water and using it to recharge the basin and mixing it with domestic water, natural water that's already in the groundwater table. It's a lot cheaper and it's abundant, and it's drought-proof. So it helps expand how much water's in the ground. Going forward, we will have that here in the San Diego Valley, in the central valley, in the central basin, the other side of Montebello. And Montebello, Pico Rivera Downey, everything along the 710 and 605, they have been drinking water that's mixed with recycled water for the past 40 years.
Do they know it?
Yes, they do. Yes, they do. More regulation. And you thought you were done with regulation. There's 1, 2, 3 TCP MCL, 1, 2, 3 trichloro propane. Try saying that. Maximum contaminant level. Looking at, that right now is not a regulated contaminant, but they're looking at setting a maximum contaminant level for 1, 2, 3 TCP. If there is an MCL for it, guess what? We have to put in treatment. We have to take that out. How about the point of use, point of entry treatment system regulation? That's another regulation that's come across. Cross-connection control. Non-podable water cross with podable water. We have people that rent buildings that have fire sprinklers systems in them. They go in and they need a source of water, so where they do, they just tap into the fire sprinkler system. It's water. That is a cross-connection. That's not a podable water source. That water sits there stagnant in the fire system until the sprinklers open up and put out the fire. They don't know better. It's a water source, so they just tap into it. So we have what's called a cross-connection inspection. We have inspectors that go out and inspect the commercial buildings, industrial buildings. If they're using hazardous materials on the property for processes, whatever is they're doing, if they're boiling engines, and there's a cross-contamination that could get back into the water system. So we have to inspect it, make sure that there are no cross-connections. Even your landscape sprinklers, you have the control wells. If they're below the level of the grass, that's a cross-connection. Water, you fertilize your lawn, that water could get back into the atmospheric breakers, get back into the water system. Those atmospheric breakers have to be at least six to 12 inches above the grade of the grass so that that water cannot get back into those vacuum breakers. Hey, now we have certified employees. We talked about infrastructure, we talked about regulation. Now we have the employees that maintain the system. California State Health and Safety Code section 63765 and 63770 says, "Water treatment operators and distribution system operators shall, shall possess valid operator certification." Doesn't say they may, or they might, or it would be nice if. It says that they shall. So that means that they have to have a certificate issued by the state of California as an operator, either a water treatment operator or a distribution operator from grade level 1 up way to grade level 5. Well, if you're certified, you're gonna get paid better than somebody else. Employees keep the water flowing. How do we keep the employees? They're up in the middle of the night, 2:00, 3:00, midnight, any time of New Year's Day, Christmas, Thanksgiving, Halloween, whatever. If a main blows and it's blowing out of the ground, they have to go and respond and fix it. If it's just a little deep, it's pumping out of the ground... If it's just a little leak that's pumping out of the ground, it'll hold. We'll put a barricade over it, come back next day. But if it's blowing out of the ground, it could cause damage. Life and limb, sinkholes, we have to go out and fix it. And you have to pay these people overtime. And if it goes for a long time, you have to pay them, give them premium food. There's always more money down the road. So how are you going to keep the employees? Certified employees, competitive wages, liberal vacation policy, healthcare, healthcare costs, life insurance, retirement plans, continued education, safe work environment. Systems need to recognize the opportunity costs associated with not paying, not paying a competitive salary, says Halloween. If you added up the cost every time someone left versus paying a competitive or higher salary, the cost of keeping the current worker would probably be less in the long run than spending money to retrain a new worker to replace the qualified worker who just left. That's a color story from on Tap Magazine. An article from AWWA, the Journal of American Waterways Association, says, "As the economy begins its slow climb to recovery, the war, the war for talent is revving up again." He suggests that employers need to be ready to move beyond such conventional basics as competitive salaries and liberal vacation policies, and embrace expectations such as telecommunication, rapid career growth and advancement, a comprehensive reward system, and work-life balance. People with talent are going to bail on you and go to the next company. All the water people are looking every day at what jobs are available, and can they make better money and work less, better hours, better benefits? So they're going to bail on you, so you have to keep them. What is the water worth? Now that we've told you that there's infrastructure, there's imported water, there's environmental issues, there's regulation, we have to keep the employees going, all of this just to get the water to your house. So what is the water worth? Cost comparison. A gallon of tap water, which you tap, is about .003, less than a penny per gallon. If you went to the movie theaters and got a bottle of water, it's about $2.50 per 16 ounce or $10 a gallon. A gallon of, you know, it's somewhere between $3.50 and $3.99 a gallon. A gallon of gasoline is $3.99 to $4.17 depending on where you get it. If you didn't have it ready at your tap, what would you be willing to pay for it? How far would you walk to get it? Yeah, this is the town of Temple circa 1801, with their donkeys and their mules, they went down to the creek and got the water. This is a historical society. Joseph, your forefathers, when they came to California, that's how they got water.
This is very interesting.
Benjamin Franklin is reputed to have observed, "When the well is dry, we know the worth of water." This insight is as relevant today as it was in 1774. Cities that are thirsty will have the means, and have the means, will pay whatever it takes to obtain safe drinking water. That's not really the town of Temple, but, okay. What's the goal? Sustainable, affordable water. We want to sustain the water source. We want to make sure that it's continuous, that it's there. We, we want to make sure the environment is maintained. We want to make sure that it's sustainable, that we don't use it until it's dried up and not there anymore. Okay? So, in conclusion, maybe well never run dry. Questions? Jerry?
You have galvanized pipe in your home, and I was told that, you know, you don't use your water, let's say, in the kitchen sink for 10 hours at night while you're sleeping. Let it run a little bit in the morning. Is that still viable, or if it's contaminated in the galvanized pipe, it's contaminated?
That's true, but the contamination will be lead and copper. You get leaching from the piping. The water that's coming into the house is safe, we drink the water standards, because we, the water purveyors, test that water so sure, at least drink the water standards. The galvanized pipe or the copper piping will leach if the water's sitting in. If you go on vacation for a week and you come back, that water's been sitting stagnant in your pipe for a week. So what you want to do is let it run for 2 or 3 minutes before you actually use it for cooking or drinking, to flush out any, any of the residuals that may have leached from the piping into your water. But usually, galvanized water will circulate on the inside, you've got a crust, and that crust will kind of act as a lining inside the galvanized pipe. I think there was a question.
What kind of substance is used for replacing our old water lines and coming into the
In the street? Or in your house? In the, um, in the street, depending on who the water purveyor is, there are a myriad of materials that they're using. Some people are using what's this plastic PVC, this blue pipe here. We don't use that. We are using that for demonstration only, but we're not using that PVC pipe. Some people use what's called ductile iron. Some people are using steel cement coated, where it's a steel pipe, where it's coated cement inside and coated outside. Others are using, we used to use asbestos cement pipe, but that's no longer, we can no longer use asbestos cement because of the asbestos. You can inhale asbestos fibers, but you can't, you can drink it, but you can't inhale it. So it's still safe, but we're not using asbestos pipe anymore. It could be copper piping, it could be iron pipe, it could be steel pipe, it could be cement pipe, it could be plastic pipe.
Are they using the same type of pipes in new construction of homes?
Yes. Iron, depending on which, which water company. We tend to use steel cement coated in and out. Other companies use iron, ductile iron.
What about PVC?
PVC, some companies are using PVC too because it's cheaper, but it doesn't last long, because if you get a crack in the PVC...
Would you like that the weather cracks would be...
No, because the pipe is underground and it's...
Underground and far enough.
Right, and if you use, in a cold zone, cold climates, you wouldn't use plastic because it could freeze and crack.
Yeah, because...
The frost.
Private property, high desert, we have PVC, and I've had some water problem. Of course, I lived there when we boiled our water before we drank.
Okay.
All in great big tanks.
Uh-huh.
So we have all the dishwater fed the plants.
Right. Using regular water.
Yeah.
Tom?
I think Golden State has just been replacing a lot of water pipes down at one end of our town. I think they're using the cement with the steel.
Cement coated in, yes.
Yeah, I do think they do. The question I had was, you know, Pasadena and other surrounding cities as well have been facing restrictions on the use of water.
Yes.
Like when you pour water in your grass. Do you see that happening in this area in the near future? And who controls that? Do we? Does the city control that, or does the water?
Each water purveyor controls that. If the city of Temple City had its own municipal water department, it could set its restrictions on its water system.
Does that Pasadena do that?
City of Pasadena has its own water system, so they put restrictions on their water that comes from the canyon, a lot of surface water and imported water, which is expensive. City of Azusa gets their water from Azusa Canyon. They have diversion rights that go back 100 years off of San Diego, where you saw that man standing on the levee of the, the river. City of Azusa, what's called the Committee of Nine, that were way back when, the Zangarros, Andreas Wardy, and those that settled in San Gabriel Valley, had a right to divert the San Diego River when it was really flowing in those days. So City of Azusa has a treatment plan at the top, and you go up Azusa Canyon, and that water comes out of Azusa Canyon, and they filter it. So if there's not enough water up in Azusa Canyon, they don't have a lot of water to give to the customers. So they have a lot of restrictions. You can only water on certain days of the week, and they have a lot of other restrictions.
And because we have so many water districts in our city, um, I would imagine that would make it more difficult to do. And also, do they also, do they all get their water from different sources, or do they all get...
In the San Gabriel Valley, they all get it from the same source, and that's the San Gabriel basin. California American has some water, that's imported water, that they blend, imported water with, with well water that they pop out of the ground. Sunny Slope is 100% groundwater. Golden State is in this system here, it's 100% groundwater, but they have the ability to get water through a connection from Metropolitan Water District. San Gabriel County pumps water out of two basins, the San Gabriel Basin and the Raven Basin. We're going to, uh, East Pasadena water. East Pasadena is 100% groundwater. So depending on who your water purveyor is and what their sources of supply are, and how much redundancy they have in wells and reservoirs, they may be short on water and they may ask for conservation. As we go forward, if it doesn't rain this winter, and if it doesn't snow, and if we don't get the snowpack up in the Sierras, we're going to go into more drought next year, and there may be restrictions going forward. We'll see.
With all of the severe, heavy fires...
Yes.
And the water used, how does this affect anything, everything?
It doesn't affect the supply of water as much as it, uh, ancillary, it affects it because it denudes the forest. The fire denudes the forest, and when it does rain and does snow, that water is just going to go, and it's going to bring mud and the silt with it. If it wasn't for the fire, you'd have the brush under the trees and grass and growth that would help absorb the water into the groundwater table that would flow back into the groundwater table. But with the fire, it denudes and, and burns the brush and the growth in the forest, and the water just runs, it has nothing to hold on to, and it just takes the dirt and mud with it.
So it's the aftereffect that is involved.
Yes.
Isn't that what's happening in parts of Colorado?
Yes. Right, and it rains, there's nothing holding the water back, and it just runs out.
Let's say that you have three bathrooms in your house, but you use one most of the time, and the water is obviously sitting in like the tub or whatever. Is it better to run the water?
Yes. You should try and at least run the water at least once a week.
Okay.
Just go in there and open up the faucets and let the water run so that you shorten it so you get good clean water. Or go to the back of the house and open up the faucets in the backyard, and water in the backyard, so the, the water goes through the house.
I see.
Goes through all the plumbing. So you're flushing the entire plumbing system in the house.
Okay, great.
Any other questions, Jerry?
If I go to Duarte, maybe it's my imagination, but it seems like the water tastes better in Duarte than it does here.
Whoa! Oh, those are exciting words!
Is that possible?
It could be. Uh, the water's from, it's California-American. In Duarte, it's California-American Duarte system. They come water from the main San Diego basin. Their wells may be in a higher strata of the aquifer.
Okay.
Taste is a perception.
I guess so.
Depending on how much chlorine they add to it.
Yeah.
To disinfect it, maybe they don't add any. So it's, it's, taste is a perception. Any other questions?
And does that go for bottled water as well?
As far as, what was the question you're talking about?
The taste?
Bottled water is either of two kinds of bottled water. There's what's called spring water or drinking water. A spring, mountain spring water actually comes off a mountain. They have to get it from a mountain spring. So our head goes up to the base of this Emeryano Mountains, Highway 18, they truck it, fill it the trucks, and take it to a plant, bottle it, and give it to you. That's mountain spring water. If it's drinking water, like Aquafina or DeSantis, Coca-Cola and Pepsi are actually taking city water from the tap and putting it through a process when removed, total is all solids, chlorine, and other constituents. They may put it through reverse osmosis. So they've taken out everything, and they have to actually put minerals back in to add taste to that water. That's drinking water as opposed to mountain spring water. Bottled water does not come under the same regulations as water in your house. That's food. Water, bottled water comes under food, and it's regulated by the Food and Drug Administration. They only have to sample their water once a year. So that's it. They sample it today, tomorrow if it doesn't meet standard, they have to wait 364 days to get back to test it again. We have to test it every week, but much more stringent.
It appears to me that, like gasoline and everything else, we have so many added costs in the home, and that's why it's so expensive, the regulations.
Regulations, especially California. We're much more regulated than any other state. As far as chrome 6, California is the only state that is setting a standard for chrome 6. Chrome 6 is currently regulated under total chromium at 50 parts. And there's another chrome that's in there, and that's chrome 3, tri-aided chromium, which is good for you. It's an orange juice. You're supposed to have some of that to, for the mineral content, but chrome 6 is obviously bad for you, but it's regulated right now at 50 parts under total chrome. And California says, "Ah, we have nothing better to do. Let's set an MCL for chrome and chrome 6." Out of 50 states, California is the only one setting that standard.
How about perchlorates?
Perchlorate, which is a rock fuel additive, is set at 6 parts per billion, and they're looking at maybe tweaking that and making it even lower. It's a good thing. So, you want to know what's in your water, you want to make sure that it's pure and wholesome. Okay? Feed it to your kids, kids drink it. You want to make sure that it, it meets the standards, that it's good, wholesome, clean water, that's potable, that you can drink it, and it won't make you sick. It won't hurt you, it won't harm you. But it comes with a cost. Regulation, every time the state and the federal government comes out with a new regulation, it costs. Every time we have to replace a piece of pipe in the ground, somebody has to pay for that. Wells only last so long. They have a life of 50 years, 60, 70, 80 years, and then they don't work anymore. You have to drill new wells. Reservoirs, you saw that one reservoir that's all pot and whatever? You don't want to drink water from that thing. So you have to take reservoirs out of service every now and then, go inside it, and look at it, you have to inspect it, and if necessary, you have to recote them. So when water sits in those reservoirs, it's healthy. Okay? Employees of the water companies, so certified employees, you're drinking this stuff. It's not gas that goes to your oven, or electricity that goes to your air conditioner, it's stuff that you're putting down inside.
Is that the reservoir that's in Ballard Park? Is that a reservoir we went to that one time?
Steel tank reservoir?
No, that's, that's a reservoir.
That's a steel tank.
Yeah, it's, it was clean. I mean, it was really clean. I mean, that's...
Maintained. Right, any other questions?
You say that all the water that's here now was here many years ago.
You're drinking dinosaur pee.
Where did the water go to make the dolphin like scope a little candy?
It's either up in the ice, it's either out in the ocean, it's either from the Atlantic, from the Pacific, made it back to the Atlantic. It's raining right now over the, over the state of Colorado. We're selling news, how much water's over there? It's displaced from where it was. It's being displaced because of climate, climate structures, whatever else and so forth, the snowpack, the snow melt, the rains. Do you remember, how many of you lived here more than 50 years? Do you remember when it rained and thunder and lightning? When was the last time you saw rain that came down and thunder and lightning? Long time ago. It's changed. I remember when I was, in the 60s, it would thunder, you'd see thunder, lightning, and rain would come down, and I'd go, "Ooh, I haven't seen that in a long time." And the snow, they said that they're not going to get snow in the San Gabels. In 20 years from now, you won't see snow in the San Gabels anymore. But it's the same water, and what we're drinking is dinosaur pee, that's going to recycle over and over and over. Any other questions?
Dan's favorite saying is, "The water we drink now is the same water that Cleopatra bathed in."
It's the same exact water. Same exact water. You can't make new water. You can't take some of this and some of that and put it together and make new water. It's the same exact water. It's in different forms in different places, but it's the same water. All right? Thank you. So, handouts for you, if you like, here's easier than cutting coupons, hudders, state water, uh, smart water sprinkler control for your home, choosing a high-quality efficient water, cold dryer and washer, and you may take this magazine and any of these things